This time we're gonna have an invocation and then we'll go on with the re- the prayers and reception. Let us pray. Almighty God, we give thanks for this crisp autumn day and are reminded of your scripture which says, "For everything there is a season and a time for every purpose under heaven." We are thankful that we were able to gather today to honor Councilman Bernice Wilson for his service to our community. We are mindful of his faith, his love. Lord, we are thankful that throughout his life and public career, Bernice's many good works have been the fruits of his faith and we are blessed to be the beneficiaries of his service. We are thankful for his voice of passion, reason, and wisdom when considering the direction our city should move. His faith has been an inspiration to us and has shaped his vision for our city and guided his helping hand. We are thankful for his sincerity, honesty, and foresight these past few years. We are also reminded for his love of his family and for Miss Mary and each of his children and grandchildren. Bernice and Miss Mary instill honesty, character, and integrity and reliance with their children and again, the greater community is for the beneficiary. We know that each community the Wilson family has become a part of, that community has strengthened, has been strengthened by those values. The Lord's Proverbs reminds us that we should start children off the way they should go and even when they are old, they will not turn from it. Lord, we give thanks for that Bernice was able to grow up and live in heart for him. His love and passion for our community is evident in not only his words but in his many beneficial actions for this city. It is our prayer that in his retirement from public service, he will continue to serve as our older statesman and provide his valuable counsel. Finally, Lord, bless his food to our nourishment and to us, to your service, and in Jesus' name we pray.
Thank you all for celebrating my father's service to the Hartsfield community. I'm gonna be brief, but I will say this. My mother and father have always been silver servants. I always remember this, back in 1974, y'all used to have all these computer, electronic printouts with everybody's social security, names and social security numbers on it. When you go out and vote, well daddy and mom used to hand us these computer printouts and say, "Y'all better walk around here in these communities and that's gonna get everybody out here to vote." And we would walk around with those things and we would go down each by everybody's name, check them off, make sure that they're gonna vote. It's amazing and they've always taught us to be mindful of our community, to respect our community. And I will say that my mother, I have to say, my mother, she can't do nothing without it. When he was ready to stand up, he stood up. And I've heard the stories of how he had to go to Coker and stand up to the man so that he can get his credit so that he can provide for his family. I recall when they built the apartment complex and we had some unsavory individuals in the community. My mother and father went and standing for that. So my father got along with the police and they started a community watch program and soon after that, he took on some of the unsavory characters on his own, got them out of the community and made our community much better. And that's the kind of example that he has been to us and hopefully that everybody here has appreciated the work that he's put forth in this community. And I will say that I'm very proud of him and thank you all for having me to speak these little bit of words 'cause I could go on and on about him, but we ain't got that kinda time. Thank you all.
He not only is a faithful community servant, you know he's a deacon at Jerusalem Baptist Church. And not only is he a community servant and a deacon at Jerusalem Baptist Church, he's a faithful and dedicated husband, father, grandfather, I think great-grandfather and all that other good stuff. And so what we do now, I think, is most fitting and proper. The law's gonna say thank you. Because to be an elected official and take the time to run, knock on doors, to do things for people who may not appreciate it, and then sometimes they do appreciate it. But at the end of the day, it's about being committed to try to make your world and your city, your community, a better place. So on behalf of Jerusalem Baptist Church, I, as the pastor, Reverend Floyd, and the deacons and other officers and members of the Jerusalem Church family, we want to say, Deacon Wilson, we are thankful and we commend you for your faithfulness and dedication of trying to uplift and make this community a better place. So thank you.
On behalf of the South Carolina House and Reverend Zedlin, I'm honored to be the speaker of the house and a friend of our honorary tonight. And I was wondering how I was gonna address him, I was gonna call him legendary. Legendary just didn't seem honorable enough, so I would call him iconic. He is an iconic figure in our community. I heard Charles Douglas talk about the legendary T.B. Thomas one time and the words he used were gripping to me in a ceremony because he said, "Coach Thomas taught us to pay attention." Well Bernice Wilson, if you ever talked to him, you paid attention.
Yes.
Because he commanded that type of respect. He was a man who knew the issue, he always knew the issues. He came up to me when I walked in the door and wanted to know where his $50 tax refund was. He said everyone he knew had gotten their $50 check to him and he wanted to make sure that I would check on that. When I first ran and Bernice, I thank God that most of your children were gone because if they would all been knocking on doors, I don't think I'd have won. But I got a call a couple of days after I won from Bernice and he reminded me and that's how great his memory is. He reminded me of the time he called me to come over to his house to talk to him about legislation and I walked up, sat down, and we exchanged pleasantries and gave me a list. These are the bills I want you to bring back to me and tell me what they are. And even though he might not have supported me the first time, he was a man that I knew that I wanted to earn his support. So the very next day, I was back and I brought those bills and ever since then, I have enjoyed a tremendous relationship with this iconic figure in our community and I've appreciated that. We, Senator Malloy and I, on special occasions, will have resolutions drafted from the House and the Senate. And this kinda perplexed them a little bit because we were both having resolutions about the same man and they were a little bit worried. They didn't want to have any duplicative information about this wonderful man and I said, "Let me tell you, this man's life speaks for itself. He ain't got one page of information." So Senator Malloy has a resolution and I have a resolution and I can tell you, there's not one duplicated word on those pages because your life can't be summarized on one page, two pages, ten pages. It takes hundreds of pages to describe this man, what he has meant not only to me, not only to everybody in this room, but to our entire community and our entire state. I wish you well, I wish you Godspeed. Thank you for everything you've done for our community, Hartsfield, South Carolina. And on behalf of the South Carolina House and the delegation, which includes Representative Williams, Representative Hayes, Representative Alexander, Representative Lowe, who else in the delegation? Lloyd Leatherman? Representative Henigan, I'm gonna let you talk about that. Representative Henigan and myself, the six of us and the remaining members of the South Carolina House, we wanted to present you with a resolution commemorating this special day. Bernice, congratulations and if you would let me present this to you, sir.
Wait on camera. I cannot speak.
You speak for me, yes.
Reverend Floyd, there was one that's in a biblical story that we know by the name of Methuselah. And he lived 969 years, Reverend Wilson. And all we know is that he lived.
He died.
And so what happens with a person who lives a good life and by example and passes it alone? Well, you think about it. There's a great quote that says, "Education is life itself." Who's ever heard Deacon Wilson say, "I put on my pants like every other man"? And you think about what he's done during his life. It's truly an American success story. How many people you know in your life that married to the same woman for 64 years? 11 children? 18 grandchildren? Eight great-grandchildren? What a legacy he leaves. So you all know him from his years here, service on city council and others. When I started dating DeVita, one of her first memories was Deacon Wilson and his family living in the same area as her grandmother. Across the street from the grandmother. So when I came here and was visiting the church, one of the first people that I remember was Deacon Wilson. Y'all would go to the church and hear him sing?
Yes.
You would go to church and hear him pray?
Yes.
You would go to church and see somebody there from his family there, always? And he raised a group of church, God-fearing people. And so what happened was is that no wonder he's been blessed with a good life where he has answered life's most basic question and what he's doing for others. I met him in a big way when he was on the election board for Darlington County for at least 20 years with Dr. Hudson and others. And Deacon Wilson was a person that came to our old law firm when we worked at Senator Salini's office day, when he first came to town. And then later on, we see as he finishes his career in the last 10 years to serve on city council. Think about all the things that happened before then. And so I think it's all together fitting and proper that we come together in a place like this and honor a good man. So it's important that we do things that will memorialize him as he goes on and on. Now he has the best example out there behind him now, which is his children and his family. And like so many other families, he doesn't have to worry about going and finding people in different places. He knows where to find his family. And so that's a great example that he has done. So today, I think it's all together fitting and proper that we honor someone, that we can just say that he's a hero in our midst. And as you all know the story, heroes are not extraordinary people, just ordinary people that do extraordinary things. And when you live a life that you can be proud of, your children embrace you, your community embrace you and we know that you have done a good job, a life will live. Sometimes it sounds like the end, but it's not the end of you. Y'all thinking he speaks out during a city council meeting? You should come to a church meeting. You should come to a church meeting. And so Deacon Wilson, I never, I don't think I ever called him Captain Wilson in my life. He's always been Deacon Wilson to me. You are to be congratulated for a job well done. You have answered life's most basic question and that is what you have done for others, notwithstanding yourself. So today I also have a resolution that is put together by the Senate. In our delegation, there's myself and Senator Leatherman and Kevin Johnson. This resolution has been put together and it has some of your accolades in it and I think that they are too numerous to end up mentioning. And when I heard a person say not too long ago, they just wanna be remembered as a good man. And I tell you, you're a good man. Come this way.
Your face will be.
Bernice's district a little bit? No, he knows that's a little bit. He'd have known about it. I did wanna mention before we get started that Bobby, being our almost newest member, said, "This is really nice that y'all have this type of event for somebody when they retire." He said, "So in four years, do I get this type of..." And I just looked at him. He said, "Y'all take me to Taco Bell?" And I went, "You gotta earn this type of thing." I can't tell you how much of an honor it's been to serve with you. My wife said to send her thanks for helping raise me the last 10 years. My daddy said to send his thanks for putting up with me for the last 10 years. But it almost feels like we've been together, you know, half of my life, at least my adult life here, working for the city. And it has been such an honor. I will tell you that Bernice has always been a champion of grandchildren and of families and children. Every year at Budget Time, he votes to give a raise to the mayors and council members because he knows that the children are counting on. And if it wasn't for Johnny Andrews, we would have had those Christmas presents this year for all those grandchildren, right Bernice? Every year he votes for it and I appreciate that. I sure hope that they don't vote for it the year that you leave because you owe them some money for that. The other funny story that Johnny was telling me when I walked in was, I wasn't here in 2007, I didn't get in the office until 2009, but Bernice was running for election in 2007 and he had these really fancy palm cards. Kinda you hang on the doors, you remember Teresa Rivers at? And it said, "Bernice Wilson for City Council." And at some point, you know, over weeks of putting those out, he was getting absolutely no traction and was in real jeopardy of losing the election. So he went home that night and he started scratching them out where it said, "Bernice Wilson for City Council" and he just put, "Mary's husband." And the election was all over. And of course, as all of you know, for the last tenure of your service, the only way that it works is because you had some really good support at home. So this is just as much a retirement party for you. I can tell you that my own conversations, and I'll have one tonight because I got the phone call asking if I was coming for dinner and I said, "No, I'm eating dinner with Bernice tonight." Is that a lot of times you do have to put your life on hold so that he can go and serve the city that he loves. But I can't say enough how much we're gonna miss you. I had a phone call with him about three times, the most nonchalant phone call I could have with Bernice when we had heard that he was thinking about retiring. And so, you know, we basically filled out all the paperwork to file for office and I think even wrote the check and put it in his mailbox. I don't know whatever happened to that. But the check guy cashed it. And just said, "You know, you don't have to, you don't have to step down, you don't have to retire, we still need you." So, you know, Bernice stepped into Coach Thomas's seat, which was a man who held that office with great respect. And so he had really big shoes to fill and he filled them so very well. So, you know, I didn't get to serve with Coach Thomas, but to lose that type of a calm presence and a steady hand on council is a really tough thing. And Bernice was that very much calm presence and steady hand. Bernice didn't have a lot to say all the time, but I can imagine in church, once Bernice got started, it was Bernice Wilson's advantage. But at the end of the day, Bernice didn't represent his district. Bernice represented his city. And if it was fair for all, then Bernice was for it. And I think that's one of the most important things that can be passed on is he represented his city and he cared about it being fair for all. That speaks volumes about a man and his stature in the community. So I hate to see you go, I do. I promised him if he would stay in office until the day that he died, we would have the nicest state funeral ever. And I got two phone calls from the two funeral homes that are my predecessors. Mr. Heinz and Mr. Davis wanna know why I was messing in the funerals in the families that they served and I said, "I'm sorry about that, but it would have been the nicest state funeral ever." The point is, we didn't want him to leave and we wanted him to stay as long as he possibly could because he does have, like the senator said, so much more to go. He has so much more to give. A lot of that gift is gonna go back to family and back to community, but the city will be at a great loss from his absence. I don't mean that in a disrespectful way. You got, I would say you got big shoes to fill. You got some big shoes already, oh. But you do, you are stepping into a pretty big shadow and, you know, our hopes are that you serve as well as Bernice did. And Bernice, our hopes are that you give him the best advice that you can give and help him carry on what you started in 2007. So thank you, thank you to your family that is here for being patient and let him step away when he needed to and serve this city. We certainly wouldn't be in the position that we are in today without his help. Obviously, it takes a team, but we've got a Super Bowl caliber athlete on that team in Bernice and I really am gonna miss you. No, 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 no. You say it right there. I'll bring this to you, sir. And I want you to know, normally we give out your plaque, as you well know, you've been through so many retirements. If you wanna take your chair, you can take this chair all day long. Come and stand, let's get a picture and we'll show everybody your plaque.